We're millions, siraj, we under. Eight thirty? It's eight thirty, I call the meeting in order with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed, is there anybody? Is nobody, move on, approval of the agenda, any additions or corrections?
I did set five personnel action notices in, on your desks this morning to be approved as part of the consent agenda.
Any questions? Stand the agenda approved as read, consent agenda my, consent agenda items, have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
And a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
We might mention that the consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes, approval of travel and education, and approval of human services reports.
And then personnel action.
Moving on. Item number six, routine business, approval of claims.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion of second, any questions or anything? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Department head reports. Uh, Dick, would you like to start?
Good morning.
Morning.
First, uh, I'll go through my routine thing and then we'll go a little more in depth on the, uh, bridge grant information. So, um, last Thursday, we, uh, lowered the weight limits on the bridge southwest of Brookings that was currently, uh, already restricted. It's one of the bridges that we changed to a annual inspection, uh, cycle. And we further reduced the load limits, uh, because of the condition of the deck. And we'll also continue to monitor that condition, uh, as we see if we're, if there's fur- further deterioration, whatever, we'll, uh, address it at that time. Um, just so, if anyone has questions or whatever, uh, and they say, well, isn't that the bridge we just derated? Uh, yes, it is. Uh, then also yesterday I had a, uh, call from a citizen that voiced his concern that we had dispatched the plows when the snow was going to melt anyway. However, there were areas, uh, that were better than others and there were areas that were bad. So, that, we just felt we were, uh, needed out there. Uh, weather has not been cooperating too well for the crack sealing operations, so we haven't, uh, completed that. First month of traffic counts are complete on, uh, forty-six, highway forty-six west of seventy-seven. If you remember the gentleman that came last fall and asked that we would do that, uh, it's still showing average traffic count, so, no- nothing out of the ordinary there. Also, I had a call last week, uh, for a request to create a four-way stop at the intersection of Thirty-second Street South and Twenty-second Avenue. And I told the gentleman that called that, uh, right now we have it, uh, stopping north-southbound traffic. East-west does not, and we also have little placards underneath, uh, the north-south stop signs that say cross-traffic does not stop. Um, what I recommended was that I bring it in front of the board to see if they felt the concern was, uh, strong enough that, uh, we should change it, it's certainly easy enough to do. Um, but my, my feeling initially was that that's why we had it signed the way it was. But the other concern that, that probably comes into play now is there is additional traffic, prob- quite a bit of traffic actually that's going east-west. And it probably would be in the best interest of everybody to have it a four-way stop. Um, if it's your, uh, consensus, I, I'll switch it as soon as we can get the signs up.
Can we just do that without any input from the city?
Sure.
I'm not sure you can on a three-mile joint jurisdiction.
I am not so sure either, I, yes. Just do it, okay. I have two. Two years ago, the same person came to me asking for a four-way stop and I went to the city and that's what she told me. But has increased.
Well, whatever I remember, the, the reason we had the, uh, we got the four-way stop on South Main and Thirty-second was the, how you, the view was not good.
Right.
High potential for an accident.
That's the only reason we got it.
The traffic counts didn't do that.
Right.
Okay.
The only thing we may be able to go different here is saying, because for the next six months, traffic diverted from the, um, Sixth Street project, now more people taking, uh, Twenty-second Avenue South to take the Thirty-second to go over the interstate brings on people that have, are not used to that intersection and don't use it as much as, as there, so, and it's gonna, it's gonna make the traffic quite a bit more than it was before. So, you know, I don't know if you can do a temporary, uh, you hate to put a four, a two-way up and then a four-way and then change it back, but it seems these next six months, your traffic pattern's gonna completely change because of the construction. And then that's probably what's causing, like, a lot of the problem is, is people not using that four-way stop or that two-way stop very often.
Right.
Now are gonna use it on a daily basis.
Right.
To get to work.
Another thing, if I remember right, when, uh, for some reason or another, the first placard that said cross-traffic does not stop, the city of Brookings put that up because that's their side of the road. So, we accommodated to make it, uh, match.
Yeah, and that was back when, when we did all this discussion two years ago.
Right.
But I agree, there needs to be a four-way stop there, but I think we've gotta have, I, I'm pretty sure we've gotta have the city in on it and, and I, I just, you know, their criteria is so different from what we use out in the county to qualify for a four-way stop. But the problem is, if somebody gets killed there, who are they gonna come after? The city or us? I think they're gonna come after us. You know, so I'm, I'm pretty interested in protecting not only the safety of our people, but also our, the, all the taxpayers as a whole. So, uh, I really think that we probably should discuss this with the city and...
Dick, is there something we can do, I mean, the construction's going on now. Is there something we can do for emergency signing, some warning signs to make people well aware, I mean?
We can do it on one side.
You know what I'm saying, it's, you, you can almost consider it within a construction zone. I mean, 'cause it's, you're getting people from the construction that are going around that way.
Yeah, I don't know, unless you put flags or a larger placard on the north-south traffic that says cross-traffic does not stop for right now, I don't, I don't know.
Well, the problem is...
It needs to be there, I've had cars pull on in front of me many times there, Dick. It's, it is bad.
But from a, from a person, the traveling public going east or west on, you know, Thirty-second Street South, I don't know why they would get an indication that they should stop. I mean, it, there's, they, they should drive through. It's the people going north and south that can't seem to...
That's where you put the signs, though.
Right, the people going north and south, they're stopping, but once they stop, they go right away because they think it's a four-way.
Right.
And the, the cross-traffic can, doesn't have to stop.
Yeah, I guess we could, we could try, we could try making it more visible or, like I say, a bigger placard or something that...
I don't think that's gonna solve the problem. I, I seriously believe that we need a four-way stop there and it needs to be permanent. And I think we need to go to the city and, you know, I, I would be happy to go talk to Jackie again and say, you know, we need to find something in your criteria that will allow us to do this because we're gonna have a bad accident there. We have had accidents there.
And I don't, I don't think to them it would matter anyway because they're gonna say it's our road, you know?
We have to put up the signs anyway, so...
And, and Maine, we, we paid for the two that were on our side and they took care of theirs and then the township. I don't know if they took care of theirs, I think the city paid for the township share.
But they didn't wanna do it when I talked to him two years ago because it didn't meet the, it did not meet the criteria. And Ryan is right on, that's exactly what it was. The only reason we got the four-way stop at Thirty-second and South Main was because of the site issue. But we don't have that here, you can see forever. But people just don't stop good. So, you know, I, she needs, we need to talk to Jackie and see if they can't find something in their criteria that will allow them.
Okay.
And if there's any temporary signage to make people more aware of the intersection?
Okay, we can do that.
Is there any chance that, right now, this is gonna be kind of a bypass or an alternate route during this construction? Uh, is there any chance we can talk to the DOT about temporary signage there of some sort, the, on their neckels, so to speak? Because it is gonna create more traffic. And they generally sign things that they cause traffic problems for. Maybe a conversation with them would be appropriate to see if they would come out and do some temporary signage to say cross-traffic doesn't stop or even a temporary light like they did on fourteen or something.
Okay.
Well, there is a sign out there that says that.
Well, but, but some, some, something that looks temporary during the construction process on the, the next exit, so to speak. It's, there, there might be some possibilities that they would participate for.
In order for their project, they put stoplights up at all the intersection, I mean, basically this is another, for the cell.
I think the situation with them is, is they have a designated route and that's where they'll put their stuff. And this is not considered a designated route. And so, they will...
It's not, but they...
Because we tried to get the Thirty-fourth, them to participate in Thirty-fourth construction saying, they said, no, that's not our designated route, our designated route is the bypass and that's where we're gonna put our money. But, you know, a temporary light like they're using, obviously looks temporary, it is temporary, and could be taken back down, uh, after construction is done there, if that would be a possibility too, but...
Okay.
But I don't think that would solve our problem in the long run because ultimately we need a four-way stop.
I think there was problems before the construction too.
There was, that's right.
Well, we may find that a lot of people decides that's, that's the preferred route to get over to the side of the interstate, so, it might, uh, once it's used for this process for the six months, it might become a permanent drive for a lot of people. So, then it, it, it would prove that to be true.
You do have a lot of people backed up because I know I take that road a lot to get over with my office on that side of town. And they'll be eight-ten deep, waiting to get on because everybody's coming into town that way and we don't have to stop, so we all, we all get the right-of-way and they're stacked up at, uh, at the stop sign. So, lights might move traffic better on that part of it too, but...
Okay.
Well, if the board wouldn't mind, Dick, maybe following the meeting, we can go down and see if we can have a minute with Jackie.
Sure. I'll check with Jackie and I'll also check with John Ritterhouse with the DOT and make sure that we can see what possibilities are out there. Okay, then, um, in the two thousand seventeen grant, uh, review, as you know, last, uh, Thursday, they announced the winners. Um, Brookings County, uh, had one replacement grant awarded and also, um, three preservation grants, uh, which were, um, quite a significant amount of money. Total with the two, or the four altogether, two million, three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. And, uh, also at the same meeting, uh, last Thursday, they awarded the grant, uh, or the contract, I'm sorry, for, uh, our preservation grant on Highway Six, which was a two thousand sixteen award. And the low bid for that project was one hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. So, also, um, when you figure, uh, with two thousand sixteen, we were awarded, uh, four preliminary engineering grants. And so, uh, we will also repair, uh, the bridge this summer just west of Bruce on Six. That will be, uh, totally our dime on that project. That was one that originally we were thinking we would have to have a replacement grant on, uh, but now that, that will no longer, um, be a, the situation. So, since its inception of the grant program with Senate Bill One, uh, starting in, uh, actually, the whole process started in about two thousand fifteen, i- if not earlier than that, getting the ball rolling, Brookings County has been awarded two million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars in bridge work. And, uh, pardon?
Would, would you say that number one more time?
The what, number was?
Two million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, what?
Three hundred and thirty dollars. And so, I, I think a- as we go forward, um, our initial strategy was to take advantage of a- as much as we could to help ourselves out. And I think it's falling into place, probably not a hundred percent because we haven't, we've had a few disappointments too, uh, along the way. But for the most part, we're doing, uh, very well, uh, as far as strategically getting help with our bridges. Also, in two thousand seventeen, uh, if you look at some of the data that was given to you by the, the DOT in their press release, uh, there were fifty-eight requests for preliminary engineering grants in two thousand seventeen. Twenty-nine were awarded, so, you know, fifty percent. For construction and replacement, there were seventeen million, s- in point seven million requested, uh, and only four million awarded. And in preservation grants, there were two point six eight million awarded. Now, how this kinda fell into place, uh, was the state took all the preservation grants that were working towards their goal of, of increasing lifespan of his, existing structures and they awarded all of the preservation grants. And next, they went with the preliminary engineering grants that had numbers that were of merit to, uh, fund those. And so, twenty-nine were awarded of the fifty-eight. And then in the construction replacement, they took, uh, seven grants that rated high enough that, uh, they could award the complete project. As you knew, the first year, uh, Moody County had one that they could only fund part of it. So, they wanted to go away from that and just fund what could be totally funded. So, that was kind of their, uh, food for thought, um, in their, uh, objective, um, thought, or train of thought, I should say. Um, and then, uh, one of the things that, as we move further into this program, and, and again, they're starting to work already last Friday on revamping our two thousand, uh, eighteen guideline that we'll be working under, um, it's starting to become extremely obvious that, that points are, are very important. What, whatever we can do to obtain points is, is gonna be in our best favor. And, and one thing that, uh, to kinda confirm this, this, this train of thought is each year you're gonna find a stiffer competition for these funds. Uh, when you take for granted, or, or for instance, in, in two thousand seventeen, the, the twenty-nine preliminary engineering grants, theoretically, you would think that they were gonna follow through and, and apply for, uh, the construct, design and construction grants. Well, out of those twenty-nine, there were like eight that are higher points than what we have right now. So, we either have to think of, uh, the easiest way would be to make sure that we're, um, we would raise the wheel tax on vehicles six thousand pounds and over, that would give us two points. That would have put us up in the money higher this time. And then also, um, if you have something that would be, uh, bid-ready, is worth ten points. Um, that's something that, that is a gamble too because, again, as you know, uh, every year we start from scratch, zero. So, it, it's, it's one of those strategic things we would have to weigh, uh, good, bad, or indifferent. Then the last one, uh, one-third of a percent equals one point. So, like, if we contributed fifty percent of a structure's estimated cost, we would get an extra ten points. Now, there are times that that could be a, uh, very good, um, move. Probably, uh, it would depend upon our availability of funds. However, uh, with the extent of our river bridges, which are two million plus a, uh, you know, a shot, uh, that could be an extremely spendy, uh, strategy to take. So, um, one of the things that I think, uh, we need to do as far as, um, strategically looking a focus for like two thousand eighteen, the bridge that didn't get chosen this year in two thirty-eight had the exact same points as the one that was awarded. I think it's very, uh, important for us to try to get that two thirty-nine structure awarded in two thousand eighteen. To do that, we're gonna, and it's a very expensive structure, to do that, uh, there's a couple of things. One, we could authorize, um, the design work, the engineering work to take place, totally funding it ourselves and that would skip, uh, the need to, the timeframe for, for it to go through the state and possibly not get chosen for a, um, grant. Also, if that would, if, if we could get lucky enough and make it bid-ready, that would give us ten extra points.
What's it, that's, that was, I was looking at, what, what's it take for us to get something bid-ready?
Engineering.
You would have to have, uh, by the definition, you'd have to have your environmental done, you'd have to have the review by the state DOT, you'd have to have, uh, Doug's a better person to answer that, the, the very specifics, but it was, why don't you come on up, Doug? It, for sure, it would be, uh, anything that would need to be done before the bridge would be able to be open for bids. So, all your environmental, all your design, all your...
We're gonna, we're gonna need to do that on this other one anyway, right?
But...
Or is that being, well, isn't this other bridge right next to it, the one that we got awarded? And then the one we didn't get awarded is right next to it?
Right.
Exactly, three hundred feet away.
Okay, so, the one we got awarded, we're gonna be doing a lot of that work anyway, right now. And so, doesn't it make sense for us to do as much of that preliminary work ahead of time at the same time that that one is going? Maybe be more efficient, get a better bid because they're right there doing it, and then get it shovel-ready for next year, for next year's thing? Or is that gonna be too late that we need to do the construction at the same time?
Well, Doug, could, Doug, could you introduce yourself, please?
Uh, Doug Wessel with Banner Associates.
And, and I'm gonna interrupt just for a minute, I'm sorry. Stacy, while we're talking about this, can you put our five-year plan up on the, so we can be asking some questions about how that relates to some of this? Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. What you did is we have, I guess, let, let's go to the beginning, we have those two bridges, side by side. We put them in hoping that they got selected at the same time so we could put them through in construction at the same time. So, that way you don't have to close the year, the road several times, this makes sense. Uh, the way it worked out, we, the, you guys got selected for one of them, on the south one. So, now that grant is good for, for, for three years. The grant has to be expended within three years. So, if, if you go through and, and we get this other one, the north one chosen next year, then there's, then there is, we can still get them going and construct it at the same time. One will just kinda have to be a little, we'll slow-play the first one and then kinda have to hurry up the second one. So, we can still do that. The other option, like Dick was talking about, is, uh, to get it, to get it, uh, bid-ready, is if you guys would authorize, uh, an engineer to go through and to go ahead with the design work, then you would actually have that completely designed, um, you would have the environmentals done, and then you'd have that ready to actually submit with your bid application next year. And what, what you have to be is, is you have to be a point, at to a point where basically you submit the plans and if you get awarded to the bids, they take those plans and they can put them to the DOT for review, right away. So, basically, you're cutting a year off of doing that. Now, the downside of that is that you pay for that. Uh, that's a big bridge, you know, it's, it's, uh, there will be a design fee to that. Uh, now, on, on the plus side of that, if you get to bid-ready, that's ten points. That's a big amount of points.
That's huge.
Yeah.
You know, uh...
Because we weren't bid-ready for these, we didn't have the...
No, you were not.
So, theoretically, we could've jumped up to, uh, you know, fifty-nine points.
Fifty-nine points, and if you look where that puts you on the list, that puts you at the top by quite a bit.
Right.
Now, conversely, you can, you can look at this, okay? If we were trying to get ten points some other way, financing is one of them, you would have to kick in up to, clear up to fifty percent, so you're kicking in an additional thirty percent. Well, thirty percent of two million dollars is six hundred thousand dollars. Well, our design fee is not gonna be that. So, if that is, you know, um, so just looking at the economics, it makes, on this particular bridge, just because it is so expensive, it makes more sense to go that way instead of kicking in that big amount of money. That's where I was getting at. Yeah.
That would be...
That's kinda where I was getting at.
That would be the most inexpensive way to, to get ten points.
And some of the, some of the projects that were chosen above us this year, they did pay in a significant percentage.
Yeah, Brown. Yes, yeah, three out of seven, pay, kicked in more money. Yeah, Brown, yeah, fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty on theirs, yeah.
Pretty expensive bridge. Um, one thing I can tell you, though, is if, 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 if you guys do want to do this, to maybe try to get it bid-ready, I'm going to know, I'm gonna need to know relatively soon. Because it's gonna take me a long time to get the design and more importantly, get it through the environmentals. And even then, I cannot guarantee you it's gonna be because it could get stuck in environmental. I can't control that.
And those environmentals are six months, a lot of times, six months, eight months?
It all depends on...
Or you get it less than thirty days, it depends how you...
It, it depends on it.
Right, we got that one in less than a month.
Yeah, so I can't, you know, you can say, yeah, we're gonna do this, but I cannot guarantee you because I don't control that timeframe.
Depends if there's bats hanging under the bridge.
And none of the, none of the money we prepaid to get it design-ready counts toward our portion of the, of the amount we're gonna pay, right?
The other thing too is, um, the bridge that we derated further, uh, that's another one that it would be advantageous to maybe fund our own preliminary engineering, uh, because that is less expensive overall, uh, to pick up the whole tab. And that would shave at least a year off replacing that. If that went spiraling down, the last thing we'd wanna have to tell the public is that, boy, it's gonna be three years minimum, uh, for, you know, what, maybe twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars in that neighborhood, uh, we would shave an entire year off of, of possibly pushing that through. Now, still, that doesn't guarantee any grants. But I think what Doug is touching on that, that's been very valuable to us since day one, is we're trying to look strategically at what would be our best method of real... method of realizing the most gain for the least amount of financial contribution. And it's starting, as you can see, like every year it goes through, it's ever-changing. And and there, the real problem is, as you know, with government, we can't just decide that and say, well, this is obviously the most economically feasible and responsible way to do it. That's why we're here, to let you guys know and.
Within our five-year plan here, Dick, it's got, submit big for design portion of structure. You would basically not submit that then? If you were to go ahead and design, have banners design the river bridge down south?
Well, which one are you talking about?
A two seventeen summary, two thirty-nine there.
Yeah, we've already did that. Right, but they didn't get awarded. The one will go forward, yes, the two thirty-eight.
We didn't get anything on that, so.
But design, you're talking design.
What it is, is you get a replacement grant, and that includes the design.
That includes the design.
The replacement land is design and construction.
Okay.
Right.
So when you look at our two thousand seventeen plan, and and it's got, that matches up with the list, the number four on there. That matches up with the structure. So does that mean that the other three that are listed on there, items number two, three, and five, we didn't qualify for? And then I, and and then why don't our numbers for the preservation grants match up with any of what we got on our five-year plan there? I must be misreading something.
Because I think they were under, go back, can you go back to two thousand sixteen? See, on the preservation, we combined them the first year, and they wouldn't allow us to do that. So we separated it, and we got the one that was just awarded. Now, in two thousand seventeen, they awarded the other three for preservation. So that will just start the process now in two thousand seventeen, won't be done until two thousand eighteen. And then the other structures on there that we didn't get awarded, whether it be preliminary engineering or or two thirty-nine, they're on hold until we decide what we'll do in two thousand eighteen.
So for for item number four on our five-year plan, we've got a replacement grant, which is the replacement and the design. So we, and we just need to do it within three years, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I'm I'm still confused, because when we look at those, the numbers on document handed out this morning, those three numbers, I still don't see that they match up with anything on our three-year, our five-year plan, the structure numbers.
Oh, that, well.
Our five-year plan's going to change every year.
But why do we get, this is what I'm unclear on. These items where we, they don't match up with our five-year plan, but we got, we were granted a preservation grant. How do we get a preservation grant in front of the the state when it's not on our five-year plan for a structure?
I think it was because they were included in that first group.
I I don't think so, because I'm looking at those numbers, the structure numbers is what I'm looking at. Am I missing something here?
I guess I'm not sure where this list came from. I'm looking at a five-year plan that was put out December second of two thousand sixteen.
December twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
Yeah.
Two thousand sixteen. It kind of looks like this.
Stacy, do we have the right five-year plan?
Do you resubmit the five-year plan?
I think we did amend it.
We had to after it was amended. Yeah, can we take that out, or show her?
Sure.
Can you put, can you put me so I can put it up on the screen? And then I think you'll see that. Now, if you can just blow it up a little.
Okay, and this is the seventeen one, is that correct?
Yes, this is seventeen.
And then if you'd slide it, Stacy, so we can see the structure numbers, that's there. I think there's some above.
And now, also, as we go forward, like, if if these structures, whether it be preliminary engineering, for example, never got chosen this year, then they go into that status of currently on hold until we decide we're going to implement or exercise to try it again.
We have to resubmit, right?
Yeah, every year we start from zero. So.
Yeah, I was just mentioning to Commissioner Krogman here, that this is, this is new to me, obviously, as a new commissioner, but this is a giant chess game. And, you know, we're the pawns in this this chess game. And just from a hundred-thousand-foot view, they awarded the one, not the other, knowing full well that we would figure out that if we pay forward, we can get the other bridge, and maybe in the same construction zone, but they're not going to guarantee that. So they're, they're, they're forcing us to pay it forward. And and I don't have a problem with that chess game. It's just that it's pretty obvious what's going on here to me as far as the two bridges being next to each other and and mobilization costs and everything else. Maybe we'll save some money in the construction costs somewhere down the line, and the engineering costs, maybe if we can do it all at the same time, have this ready. So, you know, that's the route to go, because I think they're, they pushed that chess marker our way, and we've got to play it.
A couple other things to keep in mind. We 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 just kind of did some brainstorming and like a dollar figure to go with each and every year to put in just as a cover amount, you know, we should be putting like two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars into these bridge things just to help with covering our share if we continue. Also, we can only get four million dollars every three years in grants. So we're, we're, we're on track. We're just, we probably would have been over if we would have ordered the other one. The other thing is, we get two hundred and thirty-two, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand each year from federal funds coming in. If you remember, we were hoping to earmark that and put it so that it would only be used for matching funds. So we're just a little shy, and hopefully, when we go into our strategic planning and our budget here in May and early June, that you keep some of this in mind, so that when I bring my dollar figures, it will make sense that, oh, this is what you're talking about, this is what you would like to have set aside. To answer Mike's question, on the, on the chess game, that's, that's absolutely right. We've been going back and forth and back and forth and trying to strategize the best we can, but sometimes it it still ain't good enough.
Step ahead of us.
Yeah.
Well, we got one, which is a million dollars, which I'm, I'm not going to be upset about that one bit. So glad, we were, we snuck in. We were number seven of of seven, so.
Right.
But but we, there are two things that we need to look at very seriously. And as as soon as possible, I would say, and I think one is to maybe raise up that wheel tax to five, to give us that that two points. And then I think we need to seriously consider and do what we need to do to look at having the preliminary engineering done, to have this next bridge ready to go.
And the fourth, you know, third part of that is to have, like Dick says, have the dollar, if we actually look at putting more dollars towards these projects also.
Right. And then the other thing, probably more important than any of those, is if we want this design and construction done so that we could have these two together, we're going to have to tell them to get, get rolling and get that done.
Right, and that's why I said that we need to do whatever it is we need to do. I don't, I don't think, is that a general consensus?
Because it'd been, I mean, it'd be the best benefit of the state and the county to bid both those together, because you're going to get a better price, and the shares would be.
To do that pre-engineering.
Our share would be less.
Shovel-ready.
Yeah.
But but could you explain the numbers just a little bit more, Dick? So when we look at our five-year plan for the structure that ends in two thirty-nine, the one we're talking about right now, and we say that we're estimating the cost of that anticipated grant at six hundred and sixteen thousand, and that the total cost would be seven hundred and seventy, and they gave us a million seventy-eight. Would you explain that to me? I mean, why is there that difference in the number, and how do we plan for that?
Well, you're talking about two thirty-nine or two thirty-eight?
Two thirty-nine.
Two thirty-nine is the one we didn't get. So we put in, we would put in a hundred.
That's the one highlighted on on my list. Is that not the one we got?
We got.
That's the one we got.
We got two thirty-nine.
Isn't that just the design portion of that part, because that would happen this in two thousand seven? And then if you go to the next one, I bet you, in the construction portion, it's a bigger number.
It'll be bigger.
Well, this is engineering and construction.
That'd be, yeah, but the engineering would happen in two thousand seventeen.
Right. We turned it, yeah, we turned it in in two sixteen, four, two seventeen. That's why it got awarded last week.
I do have, we do have a scheduled nine-ten agenda item, so.
Okay.
I have to cut you off right now.
I can explain that to you. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Doug. Go to our scheduled agenda items, nine-ten, public hearing for consideration of proposed supplemental budget to the Register of Deeds Relief Fund.
Good morning.
You open up the meeting?
Hey, I'm, I'm asking for supplement to the budget, basically because I I budgeted for the, in two thousand sixteen, for the bulk of the cost of Doc Pro. And as we know, it didn't get put in until February of seventeen, so the bills came in to be paid out of the seventeen budget. The money is there in my M and T fund, but I just didn't budget for it in seventeen.
Any opponents that would like to speak towards? Any questions from the board?
I would make a motion to approve the supplemental budget for that.
Well, we need, we have to close, we have to go through the public hearing things and then close it. You asked for opponents?
Yeah, opponents, proponents. Hearing done, we close the meeting.
Now you can make your motion.
Now I'll make the motion to approve the request.
And I'll second.
Any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have a nine fifteen. Mike, do you have a brief?
We've had a steady stream of people coming in. Last, since the last meeting, we did have thirty-six veterans stopping in. A lot of them are curious about the healthcare issues again, and and internment, and also those going into assisted living and nursing homes. We did have twenty-six on the welfare side. We had a hundred and eight calls coming in, made eighty-seven calls out. And I did partake in the, yesterday in the Brookings Chamber of Commerce Military and Veterans Affairs Meeting that we have every month, and also did go out for Governor's Day at the, up on campus for the ROTC.
Have you, have you talked at all to the Watertown people regarding the veteran cemetery that they're looking at putting on this side of the state? Or home, I mean, not cemetery.
No, I have not. I have. When it comes to the, to the veterans' home, I'll be, so when you come to veterans' home, the VA would help build a veterans' home on this site, but the agreement, the same way with the cemeteries, is that the state has to take it over and basically pay for it after that. And the biggest problem we've had with with that is that is is it boils down to money. And they don't want to take that much of an additional burden. And and so part of it, the VA will only help if the state will own it when it's done. And that's really what it boils down to, is the state does not want to own another state veterans' home at this time.
It is a cemetery. I'm sorry. I just, I had read this, this email this morning, and it is a veteran cemetery that the the Vietnam Veterans Association is working on putting in in Watertown. So there, there's.
The, the same way with the cemeteries, and and they did do, ten years ago, the, the State Veterans Affairs Office did a study comparing the cost of state, you know, the cemeteries, the national, because it has to be kept at the same standards as the national one out west. But the state would have to own it, and I can't remember, it's like a half a million dollars a year of upkeep, and they just weren't able to get the backing for that.
I think they're, they're doing it. I mean, apparently, I, I think you should maybe reach out to the Vietnam veterans. And if you call Greg, he can tell you who to get ahold.
Yeah, I, actually, I was at the DAV meeting, State DAV meeting last weekend, and a lot of the Vietnam veterans of America, especially out of that chapter there, and I do know three or four of them pretty well.
Okay.
So I'll talk with them.
Yeah, see, because I think they're moving forward.
They very well could be, yeah.
All right, thanks, Mike. We do have another public hearing. It'll open it up at nine fifteen AM for consideration of proposed supplemental budget to the General Fund Mosquito Department. Discussion of Possible Action on Resolution Number seventeen dash twenty, a resolution approving a supplemental budget to the General Fund Mosquito Department. Opponents, Ms. Steve, would you address?
This is from the mosquito grant last year that I had applied for. It's only for chemicals, for the mosquito spraying. And I figure we'll just use that money this year, being we still do have some chemical on hand at the shop. So I'd like it if we could just transfer it over, and that money will be available if needed in two thousand seventeen.
Okay. Is there any other proponents? Opponents? No other opponents? Close the public meeting. Look for a motion to approve.
Move approval. Second.
We got a motion and second. We call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, you have a report you would like to give, Missy, while you're here?
I do not have anything at this time.
All right, thank you. Chris?
Good morning.
Morning.
Very fast, not a lot for you again. Just to bring the commission up to date, that Reed did pass his final school. So I have a, or will have a certified appraiser in a month when he actually receives his, his PIN. So now he is set. We've got an employee for the next five years. He's got to pass three courses in five years, two U.S.P.A.S., two workshops, all that continuing ed. But his clock actually starts now for five years, so that is a good thing. My appraisers were already out and about, or have been, short of Reed, because he had to attend that school, but the other two have been out. We're going to wrap up our roll review this year. No word yet on any OHE or Circuit Court appeals. Haven't heard anything yet. May nineteenth is the deadline. OHE, then, if we get any appeals to Office of Hearing Examiners, they, I got an email from them that they're planning to begin all OHE appeals on June fifth, to be concluded by July twenty-one, which is really a sticker for me if we get one, trying to do this conference at that time. But also with that, Terry, I forwarded you the email, and Abby, the Office of Hearing Examiner judges want to know if we anticipate anything. If there's any conflicts from myself or the state's attorney in that time period, those dates, that wouldn't work. So I'll just be in touch with them and and see if there's any dates that will not work, so we can get blocked out of that time period. Next thing is Sales Ratio Workshop. Department of Revenue contacted me. We hosted a Sales Ratio Workshop here a couple of years ago. They were wondering if we would do it again, and we are, which saves us a ton of expense. It's a free workshop. It's a requirement for us, but to be able to do it in our building, there's no travel, no meals, no anything. So we'll be bringing about forty to fifty people here to Brookings on June twenty-second for an afternoon workshop session, so. That's all I have.
Richard? Richard?
Good morning.
Morning.
We've got the Development Department report from Mr. Hill. That's pretty much self-explanatory. Stacy did bring up an item that I was not aware of. She will touch on an antenna, antenna replacement on the Twentieth Street South in South Main and the Water Tower. The current antenna is approximately six feet two tall, I believe, Stacy. She had, Stacy has the memo on that from Bob. So, just an FYI, that'll be something that'll be coming up in the future. I tried to figure out where it came from this morning, and as of yet, I couldn't figure out that avenue worth letter or how it came about. So, we'll have to wait for Mr. Hill to come back for-
And this actually came about after our E nine-one-one meeting on Thursday. Bob had a discussion with our, with our tower that's on the Twentieth Street South Water Tower. Our antenna that has our, the repeater on it is too tall due to its location in the flight zone with the nearness to the airport, so it has to be lowered. And so, Bob received a quote from Van Tech to do that for approximately twenty-four hundred dollars. So, I think that's going to probably be a request that he's going to be bringing up.
And it's been there for how many years?
This one hasn't been there all that long. This was the one that was added, I believe, twenty thirteen, twenty thirteen, I think. So, it's, yeah, it's been there a handful of years.
And is what the quote for, we're going to shorten the tower? Is that what we're doing?
Lower the antenna.
Lowering the antenna.
Just the antenna, but the tower itself, we don't-
The tower, the water tower, it's on the tower.
Oh, it's on the water tower, okay.
The antenna that's on top of the water tower is too tall. It's my understanding, anyway, so.
I wonder, I guess that's a question for Bob, what the effect will be on transmissions.
It probably won't help.
That's what my thought was.
And, yeah, we just had a discussion on that at E nine-one-one last week-
We already have so many issues.
About communication concerns and lowering that antenna-
We'll talk about that in our-
Six feet is not going to help matters, but-
All right, tonight is our meeting night, and we have a busy agenda lined up. So, things keep on track, we should be able to make, make them all. That's all that I have.
Vicki?
Good morning.
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 We got through another season of first half taxes. We collected over seventeen million dollars in April for first half taxes. Everything went good. We are up to date on everything except what comes in the mail today. So, otherwise, we're caught up and good to go on that. And I put on your desk this morning, we received the wind tower money that will be apportioned out this month. And the county portion was down about five thousand dollars from last year. And that is because of the usage or how much electricity it generated. Apparently not as much as the previous year, so that, that went down a little bit. I think with budget-wise, we are three thousand dollars less than what we had planned on for budget. And I gave you a breakdown of all the years to see how it's changed. And you will note that from two thousand and nine to two thousand and thirteen, the monies were divided by ag levies, just like property taxes. And from fourteen through seventeen, they were divided thirty-five cents, thirty-five percent to the county, fifteen percent to the townships, and fifty percent to the schools. So, that is all included in your breakdown. And I did check with Department of Revenue, Todd Bailey, because I know that there's been some talk that the schools aren't getting all this money. And he said that it, it affects their state aid. They still get the money. We divide it out, just like we've always done to the schools. But whatever the schools get is taken into consideration for what they get for state aid. So, that is where the difference is in the schools now compared to what it was. And also, we received back from the state of South Dakota for the South Dakota Corrections, two hundred dollars for every bed that exceeded the county's three-year average. We did receive a check for thirty-five thousand, eight thirteen sixty-one. So, we are getting some relief there. It's not as much as we would like, but still, it's, it's a lot better. I believe last year we received four thousand something, so. So, we did receive that as well. And otherwise, we're just business as usual. Is there any questions?
Ms. Pierce?
I did my real estate taxes online. It worked great. I was just curious if, if we're getting more citizen usage of that option?
We are. I can bring forth next time how many more. But I would say we had probably forty percent more than what we had before. And it is getting used more. And we tried to advertise it a little better this year, and yes, it, it did get used more. And with that, you can either do a check, and that costs you a dollar fifty, or you can do a credit card, which is about two and a half percent, depending on the credit card. And we had more checks this time. Before, we had more credit cards. But I think people are using the checks for obvious reasons. It's not, it's as expensive, so.
And with the increase, is it, is it enough of the business that it's making any difference in the traffic at the front counter or not?
We really didn't notice anything different, no. But, you know, for the people out of town, it probably saved some mail. But, yeah, we really didn't notice it up, up at the counter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Marty, can you report in four minutes? Four minutes?
I want to watch.
As I gave you the report, you guys could just look at that. I'll just quickly, just, we had a stakeholders meeting at East Central Behavioral Health. There's still, seems to be some, we still have some issues at the hospital and committals and so forth. The hospital has got a form now that if we, Karen Weber designed it, who's in charge of nursing up there, or the emergency room, is that when we have some issues up there with a committal or something, that she fills this out, and then we're going to discuss it at the, at the stakeholders. So, we, we continue to, at least we're talking. We don't agree all the time, but at least we're talking it out, and, and, and eventually, maybe we'll agree. I don't know. But, but we still have some issues in committals. The other thing is, is last week, we had the government, government kids come in for a tour of the jail. Went well. Last night, the police department has a citizens committee, or a citizens academy, and they always spend one night at, at the sheriff's office. And they had about ten last night that toured the jail, and, and I gave a presentation and stuff. So, other than that, we just continue to be busy with, with the weather. Had some slide-ins yesterday, and we didn't have anything major, but the snow, the snow made us work a little harder for a few hours, anyway. So, other than that, that's, that's all I got, if you've got some questions.
No?
I don't know if one of the commissioners is going to do that, or if you're going to do it, anything going on with the expansion project?
Still waiting.
Yeah, tomorrow's May third, so that's the magic number. So, then I guess to move into a contract with the architects, and then a variance before the city, and then our historic preservation-
Application.
-paperwork.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I think we can do our nine-thirty, discussion of possible action to approve closing a portion of Broadway Street, County Road twenty-three in Aurora for gala days on August fifth, two thousand and seventeen. Mr. Tingle, would you introduce yourself and explain what you have?
Morning. My name is Pat Tingle. I am the chair for the Aurora Gala Days this year. Excuse me. What we're looking at doing, because of Aurora, the placement, we have the county road that runs right down our main street. We would like to propose to block off that Broadway for that Saturday to have our street dance that night, and also our, our gala day event in, on the street, and also in the park. So, our, our entertainment, previous years has always been in the park, but we've kind of gotten to the point where we're getting a little outgrown on that. We want to kind of have one-stage location for the street dance and our entertainment throughout the day. We have talked to the elevator, the ethanol plant, and the new Navida plant about traffic for them on that, on that highway, or that county road that day. The elevator is okay with it. They're worried about the wheat at that time, but they said that they would be able to bypass and use the gravel roads if needed. I would just have to talk to them a couple of weeks before, so they could let their drivers know. The ethanol plant informed us that they will probably not be delivering anything on that Saturday, so they don't have no problem with that either. And then Navida is not for sure if they're going to be up, but they, again, don't think they're going to be doing any deliveries or anything on a Saturday also. So, as far as them three businesses that we were worried about with semis, it doesn't sound like it's going to affect if we closed it down. The map kind of shows what we came up with in alternate routes for around the city for just regular traffic to bring up, let's see. If we, if you're coming in from the north, basically it'd be Pine, and then over to Nicolette, or they could go to the new Lovejoy, or even further to, to, let's see. Yeah, Rasmussen, Madison. So, I mean, it kind of goes around that way. We have talked to the businesses on Main. The, the bar is okay with it, because actually, the bar and the new gas station is going to be involved with our street dance and all our events. So, they are okay with blocking that off. We would have a path, though, for people to still be able to get gas. The gas pumps would still be open that day. So, there still would be basically just through traffic to that location and not beyond. We would basically be blocking it off right to the south of Nicolette on the one side. And then basically, bar location would be the street block off just at it. They wouldn't be able to come all the way through it. So, we'd have, you know, closure signs on the two ends, so we wouldn't have that traffic coming through. As far as the fire department, we talked to them. They would basically go out Nicolette and then go around town, so we wouldn't have problems with them. And they were okay with that, so.
What, what were your hours?
We were looking at closing it at nine AM until two AM. Basically, nine AM, because we, with the setup, and we also do have a road race in the morning, well, run a five K, so we kind of wanted to have that blocked off there. And then the, the street dance would be done by one, but to give us time to get everything off, we were, you know, be about two o'clock probably by the time we get barricades and fencing and stuff off of there, so.
Is the post office open that morning?
They are not. They are not open on Saturdays over there, so. And if they are, if they do, they still could get to that post office area, because like I said, the, the, the main roadblocks would be by the bar and the gas station, so they'd be still able to park on that area. But, but they, they are not open on Saturdays, so. In the past, we have always kind of blocked off the parking during the day because of the parade and stuff like that that we have, so that we've never really had any concern or anything about parking on Main Street at that time, so.
Marty, do you have any comments?
I told Mr. Tingle that I wouldn't object as long as he talked to everybody and everybody understood. Our only concern was if there was a truck that snuck through the residential area. But he's, he, he's talked to Terry, and if they put notices out, so I, I have no issue.
I think it's good for the community. Like, I grew up in Aurora, and I like to see that you're expanding, and it's becoming a pretty nice event, so. Guess I look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and allow the closing. Second.
I get a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Marty, did you have any more? Nope. Okay. Moving on to regular business. Action approved Resolution Number Seventeen dash two-one, a resolution authorizing the purchase of one two thousand and seventeen rotary mower based upon the price established through Brookings County Highway Department bid process.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Dick, would you have some background you want to?
This is a mower that'll be fit onto the tractor we bid a month or so ago.
Okay. Any other questions from, nope. Hearing none, call roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B, action approved agreement Number Seventeen dash twenty-eight, a letter of contract for professional engineering services for structures Number zero-six dash one-one-two dash zero-eight-zero between Brookings County and Banner and Associates Incorporated.
This is a-
Move approval?
Yeah, this is the one that, oh, you got to have that first.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion, Dick?
This is the one right west of Bruce that we're going to repair the girder ends and weld new pieces in, and that'll be done this summer.
This was, I know, Ryan, you weren't here. We kind of talked about this a couple of weeks ago. I think it's a good project. We found an alternate way. We don't have to place the bridge, and this'll give us twenty-five, thirty years of life to the bridge, so.
I'd like you to find these things for all the other bridges, too, please.
No doubt.
It's a proactive approach, and it's a good job, so. You call the roll, please?
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C, action approved agreement Number Seventeen dash two-nine, an application for occupants of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We call the roll, please?
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, action approved agreement Number Seventeen dash three-zero, an application for occupants of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move approval. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Call the roll, please?
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E, action approved agreement Number Seventeen dash three-one, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Mark Whaley slash VJ Allers Excavating Incorporated.
Move approval. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any background here you?
This is part of a construction project. It's only temporary. However, I asked Mark to fill out one of these permits strictly because I wanted to make sure the neighbors all knew what was taking place and that they had been notified.
Okay. I didn't even see you sitting back there.
Introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm Mark Whaley, owner of VJ Allers Excavating. And we are, a developer is adding sixty-two more lots to the north end of Aurora. And in the process of that, we have to put in a lift station for the sewage. And we have to go about eighteen feet deep to set that lift, and the water table's about nine feet below grade. So, I've contracted with a company from the cities who is very familiar with Aurora. They dewatered in the southwest corner of town last year for prennis. And so, we're going to hire them to come in, dewater. We'll pipe the water, and I believe there's a drawing someplace, but we'll basically pipe the water down the right-of-way. And, and there are, I think, four big concrete pipes that cross twenty-three there, and will run through one of those pipes, and it's the natural flow of the water. I did talk to Verison to make sure that they knew that we were going to be dumping all this water on their property, and they were okay with it. And it's, as Dick said- it. And it's, as Dick said, a short period. I think we've got, our permit from the state says we've got a month. I think we'll get it done in about two weeks. So.
Okay. Call the roll please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter F. Action approved. The application for the hazard mitigation grant.
Move approval. Second.
Got a motion and a second. I think it's kind of self-explanatory. I think it's the same thing we've done before, isn't it?
Yeah. And this is, my understanding is that it's a grant that will help us update our pre-disaster mitigation plan.
Okay. Call the roll please.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter G. Action declare items as surplus property to be disposed, to be disposed of via online auction.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none. Call roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number nine. Commission Department Director report.
Included with my report is the updated general fund surplus, the yearly comparisons. Also, probably the largest part of my report was at Spring Workshop, I believe it was Rod Forten with Legislative Audit suggested that the board know every parcel of land that the county owns. Good to know, good information to have. So I was working with Chris and with, with Vicki to find exactly what that meant for Brookings County. So we have the, the report that was included in there that showed every parcel and most of them were pretty self-explanatory. And there were several though that were maybe some right-of-ways or just small parcels of land and Vicki can help me out here as we go. But I think there might be a couple that we could maybe look at possibly selling at some point. Especially, specifically that one in, in Bruce.
Yeah, there's a lot in Bruce. And I think at one time it was in a tax sale and it was just, it's been many years ago and it just never had done anything about it. I did talk to Jeff Anderson, the mayor of Bruce, and he just said it was in the floodplain, that Bruce themselves, the city of Bruce may be interested in it if we could, were interested in deeding that over to Bruce. But just an idea.
So that was one we have. Just to kind of run through these, we have the salt sand pit just up on Highway thirty. This is in Argo Township. There's, it's kind of circled here. I'm trying to circle it. Can't see it very well, but there's just a small right-of-way there. Aurora Township. There's this little triangle piece that we have. Banger Township. This is just off of Highway eighty-one. There's just a small, tiny stretch there that we have. And that's, yeah, just along where Highway fourteen and eighty-one come together there. South of Aurora. Here's the triangle on the S curve south of town in Madera Township. Little triangle piece there. We have one just outside Aurora or just on the edge of Aurora that we, that the county owns. There's the one from Bruce. Then we have a couple of the, where the, the highway shop in Bruce is located, it's actually two separate parcels. There's this kind of long trapezoid piece and then there's the triangle piece as well. Both of those make up the highway shop at Bruce. Sinai, this is on the, the west edge of town as you're coming into Sinai. The Lake Sinai is, I, I is kind of up in this area. If you come in, the kind of where it's yellow, the county owns that piece there. This is the highway shop in White. Let me get into the, the Brookings Highway Shop here in town on the west edge of town. Courthouse grounds. Nineteen twenty-one parking lot is ours. Sheriff's parking lot just to the east of the sheriff's office. The other parcel that makes up the highway shop here in town. The Sinai shop that we, that was new last, built, new last summer. And then there were two, two that are owned jointly with the city. This building and then the parking lot to the south. So.
What was the one just outside of Aurora? Go back please.
So that's Rasmussen.
Yeah, it's the old gravel pit.
Stacy, did I hear you say anything about the resource center? Was that on that list?
The, the what?
The resource center?
Um, oh.
That's probably under the city and county and.
Because we own the building. This is just land.
So, yeah.
Because we don't own the land.
We just own.
We don't own the land underneath the resource center. We just own the building. So that's why that's not on this list. This is specifically land. So, you know, with any of those, would you like me to research any of those that, you know, work with Vicki and we could bring something back to you on, on maybe disposing of some of them that?
Well, I would like to see us, if, if there are some, like for example, the lot in Bruce, to sell it to someone to get taxes, albeit I'm sure the taxes wouldn't be very much. But I think we should offer that for sale to the public. And then that, in Aurora, that's a pretty good, decent sized spot there. Nothing. It wouldn't.
Water, slew. I mean, it's.
Which is the same.
But I always thought somebody else owned that. I know different.
I guess I have a, a concern for those pieces that have a part that runs near a road where right-of-way issues might come up.
Right. We can't get rid of those. But this one is a different deal.
Yeah. I, this parcel, yeah, this one in Sinai as well.
It's all slew too.
Yeah, it is. It's all.
It's all wet. Yeah, it looks.
There's not, that one is really all water.
Maybe Ryan can sell that.
Ducks.
Give me the good ones.
I think we can think about it and if we, in the future, look at, I don't know, any of any value. I mean, there's no sense of having them.
Could you go back to the one that was the gravel, salt, whatever?
This salt sand pit up.
Yeah.
Along Highway thirty. That's west of White. Is it, am I right?
Yeah.
Is that west of White?
Right off, right off the interstate on the north side of the road.
And so there's some right-of-way issues on that. I, I was wondering, the reason I ask about that is, is there water in that and is that a liability issue for kids at all or?
No, it's, it's where we store salt sand. It's all above water.
We have a containment.
We're using that? Okay.
Well, I guess I would say if there's anything that we use, we want to keep it.
Yeah. Yep.
Probably cuts off a lot of them. And then after that, that's not being used. I guess if you want to bring those to us and we can maybe decide if we want to auction them or bring them available or whatever you want to do if we want to dispose of them. You know, the right-of-way, I understand some of that too, but you know, sometimes you end up with a sliver of land that I'm not sure what we have for it or if, I don't know. We can, we can check. Look at all of them and see.
And we can have that discussion, I think, with Dick to, to go take a look at those and, and see what's going on with them right now. Their right-of-way issues involved.
I hadn't realized the county owned that triangle that's on South Main before you get onto the Sinai Road. And is that something, if, if we own that, have, has the commission looked previously at the safety issues on visibility there?
I, I can give you some background on that. That's, that was actually purchased for a safety. If the Highway seventy-seven, it was actually bought at the time when it came up for sale, if we changed that intersection to make that intersection, a square intersection instead of the S curve part there. And that's when we purchased it and we cleaned it up. There were some trailer houses in there and we cleaned it up and purchased it. So.
Now using it for gravel, right? Or?
P rock.
P rock.
The piece of Bruce that you were talking about that the city might be interested in, that's just basically we do a deed transfer. There's actually no value in that piece of property.
We can do a deed transfer if that's what you would so want to do.
Looks to me like, are we maintaining that piece of property? Do we do?
No.
Who, who's maintaining it?
Probably the city, but I don't know that for sure.
Okay. That one seems to me to be, to be one that you could just transfer the deed and move it to them and get them off our books without.
I think we should see if there's any value though. I'd rather have somebody pay taxes on it.
I understand that, but nobody's had any interest apparently either. So we'll see what happens. But anyway, that'd be, that'd be one to look at as far as disposals is concerned.
We'll do some additional research on that. So. And bring information back.
Okay.
Uh, the Momentum article.
Good job on that.
Received that, that was, that publication came out last week, I believe. So that was our article in the paper or in that magazine. The SDACC resolutions process, that is included with my report. If we have any proposed resolutions, they're due by the end of July. And then. I was, some of the, the upcoming events that you can see there that you have coming up specifically Thursday this week, the appreciation reception for mayors, volunteers, boards, committees and commissions. Some other things are a little bit further away, but we do have a, the convention and Visitors Bureau Tourism Luncheon is May, not until May eighteenth, but they want an RSVP by Thursday this week. Is it something I can RSVP for you? Most of you received something in your mailbox or maybe you received it at home. Does anybody plan to go that you would like me to RSVP for that? For you, the tourism luncheon?
You could RSVP for me.
Yes, I'll attend.
I have a meeting, I can't make that.
What is that, Friday or Thursday?
It is Thursday, May eighteenth from eleven-thirty to one.
Hold off on me.
Okay. And you see the upcoming dates for the Safety Week activities there. I think we switched one. If you're interested in fire extinguisher training, let me know. We have some of those planned, but I just put the, the fire alarm and the lockdown drill and the severe weather drill coming up here in a few weeks. Also, I received an invitation for the South Dakota Board of Regents Reception. That's coming up on May tenth. It's from five-thirty to eight PM at McCrory, at the Visitor Center at McCrory Gardens. I need to RSVP by this Thursday for that as well. And I think you've received, maybe received those individually, but I don't, maybe some of you've already RSVP'd, but I can do that for you too.
Which ones are?
Board of Regents, South Dakota Board of Regents Reception, May tenth, Wednesday, May tenth. That, it's evening, five-thirty to eight.
I'm out for that.
I'm not going to that either.
Yeah, I'll go.
Larry?
And, and it's a come and go or do you stay that whole amount of time?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay, I don't remember seeing.
It's from five-thirty to?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty to eight.
And where's that at?
McCrory Gardens Visitor Center.
Thank you.
Do you plan?
I'm going to go. I can't stay that whole time, but I'm going to go.
As far as that repeater antenna goes on the south water tower, do you want me to give Bob any direction on that? I don't know that it's something we really have a choice on. I mean.
If it's in violation, they better get it fixed.
Just pay for, direct him to pay that bill and, and fix it. You know, unfortunately, we're going to have to take a look at it. This is the one, the repeater that bounces off the elevator in Sinai. So I think we're going to have to, I was part of the discussion at E nine-one-one too, but. Any direction?
Stacy, is the twenty-four hundred dollars, obviously you usually can't take these antennas and chop them. So it's a replacement antenna of some sort. Is it possible that they have a updated antenna range with something shorter? Is that what they're looking at for the twenty-four hundred dollars?
Yeah, it looks like just a VHF antenna that's shorter and then labor. That was the cost. The only, the only part was a new antenna.
Okay, it doesn't indicate that the range, range would be the same or decreased?
No.
That might be something we want to check into. Just, you know, if it costs another five hundred dollars, get a better antenna with better range. Yeah, I can see that.
At our next E nine-one-one meeting, we'll be talking more about the radios in the county.
The only other thing I had was the Brookings Historic Preservation Commission had given us some information and I put that on your desks this morning to, just a letter and a some pants, some information about what they do. And other than that, I don't have anything else.
I just have a question. What's going on with the parking lot?
The parking lot?
Right. Over there by the Fifth Street Gym? In the, the parking.
Oh, the, the ordinance. I'll defer to Terry.
We did a draft. We're just waiting for, I think the last time Stacy and I discussed is whether we had gotten back from everybody on whether they wanted to go forward, the renters on that. And, but we, Brittany actually started a draft on it.
Okay. So you talked with, is it Mills that has nineteen twenty-one building and everything's, we're, we're good with them?
I don't know that they, they haven't, I don't think they're the ones I got back to maybe. They haven't gotten back to you yet?
No.
So, yeah, we need to visit with, with them again, but I can get you in touch with who.
Yeah.
My contact was. So. So, yeah, we should have something shortly.
Yeah. I mean, it's something we're working on. It's, got to get confirmation that the people around it want it. So. Kind of working on stuff people want first.
Stacy, is that it?
Yep.
Okay, Terry, you have deputy state's attorney?
Working on ordinance with LeAnn and Bob and Richard. And also, we will take enough as soon as we're done here and headed to Deadwood for our annual State's Attorneys Conference, which I'm sure will learn a lot. And other than that, it's just been really, really busy. So nothing else to report.
Thank you. Move on to Commissioner Report. LeAnn?
On April eighteenth, I attended the community meeting for the City of Brookings Master Comprehensive Plan. And there was conversation regarding housing and joint jurisdiction and, and some of those. There, the process is still going on. And that was the community meeting. I think there was maybe thirty, forty people there. And then the next night, I attended the, the meeting of the committee itself where they, they did some reporting back. And again, I think it's Ryan and Larry that I think will get an invitation to meet with people to discuss joint jurisdiction in, sometime in May. I think that'll be forthcoming. On April nineteenth, we had Stacy and Mike and I, and I think Vicki was there. Can't remember who else was there. Can't remember who else was there, we talked about, had a meeting on county liens and we met with courthouse staff and, um, discussed, focused our conversation on court appointed attorneys fees. And we kind of divided up some things for people to look at. Irene is going to be sending out some letters and I think we're maybe smoothing out the process between the clerk's office and getting those letters out, but Irene volunteered to take responsibility for that. And, um, Judge Stoltenberg did send out a, a letter, or an email, I should say, to, um, all of the attorneys in Brookings County, asking on court appointments to be sure that we've got the most recent address for the defendant and for some other information, so that happened. And I think Stacy, is it September we're gonna meet again? I can't remember the date.
Yeah, we set a, a date, I think we're gonna try to meet quarterly now, but.
I don't think we've gotten any money from the state office that's supposed to be doing those collections. And we're gonna keep an eye on that, so. That, that's in progress to see if we can't collect back some of those monies. On April nineteenth, I went to the BEDC meeting. On, um, April nineteenth and again on April twenty-sixth, met with Terry and Bob and Richard to discuss, we're working on the commercial section of the zoning ordinance. And that is, um, almost done. First district had added in what they called some performance standards for noise, air, light. And the recommendations that were coming did not have any measurable, uh, element to it. So it would, I think, and I think, I don't want to speak for Terry, but I think she thought this too, that would result in some litigation, that, that you couldn't enforce that part of the ordinance because there was nothing measurable. So that you could say you're in violation or not in violation. And so they're working on fixing that and then we'll go back.
It was pretty relative and, and objective and subjec, I mean, it was just, how do you measure what one person considers vibration versus glare versus? So we just ask for definitions or we would not have that in there.
April twentieth, I attended the, the, um, chamber mixer. On April twenty-fourth, I went to the SDSU Engineering College Dean's Reception. I'm not sure why I was invited to come to that, but really I just ended up talking with people a lot about roads and bridges and joint jurisdiction. Those were the conversations that I had, so it was kind of a good meeting. And then, attended the E nine one one meeting on April twenty-seventh. And we had a lot of conversation regarding the, the problems that we're having with our radios and some of the communication problems that came out of Brush Lake that I really would like to see us try to fix in case we have a countywide problem event occur. We would have some communication problems. I'm gonna let Commissioner Jensen report on that because I think you've got a better handle on that than I do. And that would be my report.
Mr. Burris? I'm up. A little bit quiet, on the eighteenth, obviously I went to the same community, uh, planning process that Commissioner Pierce went to. Uh, I was a lone person on future growth at the committee table, so I did have a one-on-one session with those people. On the nineteenth, I attended the, uh, BEDC's Leader Roundtable with the same group, with local leaders in the community and had a, a very good discussion. Covered the same types of areas there. Then after that, I was out of town for some professional educational experiences and kind of quiet until today. That concludes my report.
All right, um, my committee meetings mostly end, or meet at the end of the month, so I have quite a few of them here last couple of weeks. They, our, our Affordable Housing Task Force for the city had a meeting, uh, the nineteenth and the twentieth for Housing Trust Fund, talking, discussion on that. That's a use of, uh, potential, uh, help for affordable housing. Uh, had a Growth Partnership Board on the twenty-first, um, and that one was, uh, quite a lengthy one. Um, just went through a lot of different, uh, things on that. And definitely moving forward, now they have the ability to potentially sell that land. It opens up just a, quite a bit of opportunity for them and they're really pushing forward now at that opportunity. Reaching out to, uh, uh, industry for research and stuff to see if they're interested in Brookings and the relationship they have with SDSU. So, uh, that was going good. Uh, went to the, uh, Optimist Breakfast, uh, on the twenty-fifth, which is always fun to get back there. Um, and then twenty-sixth, we had a beta meeting. Um, they've got a lot going on. They just went through their financial audit and, uh, and came through with that, saying they are in compliance with all material, with all, um, presented fairly and, uh, net assets and cash flows for those years are in accordance to county procedures and looked good. And so then the next day though, they had their first federal audit. She's never been through one, uh, they don't happen very often, ever since she's been there, it's the first one. They, she says, uh, us and Watertown were being audited. They like to pick people close to pier so they can fly into pier and then come back. And so, with our proximity pier, we were one of the lucky ones. So we'll find out how that went, but they've been working really hard on the building grounds and everything to, to get everything ready to go for them. They sent a huge list of stuff they're gonna be looking at, and so they've been really working hard on that to get that done, so. Uh, they're planning to come to give us an update here, I think on May sixteenth, I'm not sure if they've reached out to be on the agenda for that. But, uh, looking at, I think, well, May sixteenth is that, that's Tuesday, right? Next, is that our next one?
Yeah.
Yeah. She said she had reached out with you guys and just wanted to give us an update of how things are going.
For beta?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and just a reader, they're about halfway through, uh, their budget year, their fiscal year. Uh, rides are up, four thousand five hundred and seventy-eight rides from last year this time. So they're doing very well. Uh, financially is going well, they're above projections for income and expenses are below so far for halfway through the year, so. Seem to be going well, and again, rider, they keep finding ways to, uh, be utilized. And so, um, seems like they're working pretty hard there. And then, uh, Brookings Health, had Brookings Health meeting. And, uh, just an update on building, they're doing, they're doing pretty good. They did have, uh, stalemate out front. You see those beams that are up and they kind of stopped there? The beams were like three inches short. And you can't be short at all, so, um, the people that had, when they had to measure them, they, they had to measure behind an awning that was over the top, so they, they did the best they could to do it. And they're just a little bit short on them, so they have to reorder those. So basically about a thirty day delay, so. Somebody comes by and asks why they're stopping, it's that little thing, and so. So they're, they're, they'll work hard to get caught up, but they're gonna probably be back a little, little further delay than they were expecting on that. And again, they said nobody's, you know, nobody's fault, nobody's, you know, to blame, it's just they did the best they could at the measurement they could get without tearing stuff down. And when they got there, they're just a little, a little bit short, so. But everything else is going pretty well, it sounds like, a lot of great feedback and, uh, and they're, they're doing well there too, so. All right, I think that's it.
Okay, on the twentieth, I attended the Joint Powers Board. We discussed heating issues in the building, still having trouble keeping finance warm. We talked about the terrazzo floor, which I'm sure you've all noticed is lovely. And they did carpet cleaning as well, so they've been sprucing the place up a little bit. Also, on the twentieth, I toured the farmhouse fraternity and enjoyed a very nice meal with some very nice young men. And, um, I enjoy going to those because it's nice to know what those fraternities are doing. And farmhouse is a very active fraternity and if you need help, they're very willing to come and help with almost anything. And the, it, they are farm boys, so they're not afraid to get dirty either. On April twenty-first, I went to the Lincoln Day Dinner. On April twenty-fifth, I attended the Optimist Breakfast for the youth in government and that's always an enjoyable thing to do. I had an extension board meeting that night and we worked on the twenty eighteen budget. On the twenty-seventh, I attended the Domestic Abuse Meeting and they've been sprucing up landscape. They've been removing some bad trees and they've done some painting inside and out. And, um, they have been full recently and I, that's, that's not necessarily a good thing. I don't, nobody knows for sure why, but they're just, um, powerhouse moving on out there, so. And that's all I have.
Okay, on the twentieth, I also went to the farmhouse fraternity deal. On the twenty-first, I went over to Alton to the Fireman's Feed, uh, enjoyed a very good steak supper. Their fire department's, uh, very appreciative of the money, they receive, uh, a wind energy company over there and they received a new truck. They say they received the truck and within five days, they were out on three separate fires with it. Good addition to their fleet, I guess. On the twenty-fifth, I, I attended the Optimist Breakfast, the youth in government also. On the twenty-seventh, we had the E nine one one meeting. We've been discussing some of the radio issues within the county. Some of the problems were interdepartmental when you got, we had a fire department from Kingsbury County and Brookings County. They weren't on the same frequency, uh, it's kind of, um, getting on the same page. They have a different type of radio than we have and, uh, we're working on that, going to state radio, vice versa. Also, within the county, there's, it just seems to be that we've, we're developing more and more dead spots within the county where the radios don't work. We've, we talked briefly about maybe hiring a, not one of the radio providers that provide radios, but hire an independent person to come in and study what's actually wrong. And later this month, um, the fire department chiefs will be coming in. We've requested to them to bring what types of radios, what type of equipment you have. Same thing with our volunteer ambulance services, they're gonna bring, so we can kind of get an idea of the equipment we have. And then, uh, at our next meeting, we're kind of gonna decide how to move forward to just kind of see what we can do. We just, we, we're getting by with using phones, radios, whatever. The comp, the, all our departments are very resourceful and do what they can to communicate. The Brush Lake incident, uh, Daryl did a good job. He got the fire chief from Arlington in the pickup with him. So they were using two different radios and they made it work, but, uh, we would just kind of want to look into it and hopefully improve it, so. That was discussed at length and, uh, I think, uh, our next meeting will have a good conversation also, so. Leanne? Go ahead.
And one of the things we talked about is, is, is the fact that part of this is state funded and it didn't make it through the legislature, the bill to take care of some of the radio programs because of the budget issues for the state this year. And we thought maybe, um, those of us that have regular conversation with our legislators might mention, if we had an opportunity, how important it might be next year to get that funding taken care of because this is, this is an important safety issue. And we need the state to get their portion of this in place. And, and it passed through, I think it was in appropriations that it, it got shut down last year, if I remember right.
And another part of the problem was, uh, when you call nine one one within the state, the dispatch usually gets, "Why didn't you answer quicker?" Well, they answered on their first ring. But if you call in nine one one, it might ring four or five times before that ring actually goes to dispatch because it's going through all the systems and searching for the closest one to, to answer. And that's, um, the dispatchers are having problems with that also. And, uh, Mark expressed that concern also, so. But hopefully you can come up with an answer, I guess. That evening on the twenty-seventh, they had a Promotion and Expansion Committee meeting. We have some new members. We all kind of agreed, we, we were coming up with ideas for expanding the program, different, uh, programs for the kids and we had a very good discussion, all of us agreed, it was, it was a very good meeting, so. And this morning, I went to, out to the Optimist Breakfast again. It was, uh, Respect Law Enforcement Morning. Clyde spoke, Marty Jackley spoke. Derek Powers was awarded, uh, Law Enforcement Officer of the Year, correct, Marty? And, uh, it was very well attended and Marty's, Marty had most of his, uh, employees there and I applaud you for that. That's a good deal, so. And then, uh, a little bit, I was reading Brookings paper and in the back, it had seventy-five years ago. Brookings County this month will receive four hundred ninety-seven dollars for highway and bridge construction as a county's share of more than sixteen thousand dollars that represents one eighth of the amount of the state received from the four cent gas tax in March. So. That's how far it's progressed till today, so. And that's all I have. If, if nothing else, uh, I'd like to move to executive session with brief break before executive session. Pursuant to, in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-five dash two, paragraph four, contract negotiations.